Hey, good afternoon. Today is May 2nd, 2022, 3 o'clock PM. This is a county commission meeting. We are honored that you've chosen to spend time with us this afternoon. When we look out and see folks in the audience, it's usually one of two things. It's going to be a good day, or it's going to be a really bad day. We never know. So, but today is a good day, and we're looking forward to spending time with you, and we hope that your time with us today is a good one. So, we're going to begin our meeting as we always do. It's been something this board and boards all across the country do. We begin with what's called a solemnizing prayer. And the definition of that is it's not for you, it's for us, it's for the commissioners. We take very seriously what we do, and we look for wisdom in places. And so, we're going to have our chaplain come up and say a prayer for the commissioners. And then, after that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, thank you for the privilege today to come in behalf of the county commissioners today. We thank you for them and the work they've already put in for this meeting today. Ask you to give them the wisdom they need as we have this meeting. Thanks for the second mile they go in serving Rowan County and all they do, Lord. For your blessings upon them, God direct this meeting today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Chaplain Taylor for being with us. Welcome back. All right, I've got one addition to the agenda, and it is, I guess we'll make that item F for our recognitions. That's been given to you for the EDC. And one deletion is we would like to delete item number four from the agenda.
Chairman, I have two additions, please.
Okay.
One is for closed session. And the second is statute for attorney-client privilege.
Okay. All right, so we'll add that as a closed session items. Anything else, any other additions or deletions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right, then, do we have a motion to prove the agenda is amended?
Some.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have the minutes before us of April 18th. Motion to approve the minutes of April 18th. Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I don't think it's been amended, the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Some.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, we will move on to special recognition. Let me catch up here. All right, Commissioner Kaski.
Thank you. The first one is a proclamation for law enforcement week. Let me read this here. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a presidential proclamation and set aside, "May 15th is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 10 through 16 is National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agencies in Rowan County play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And whereas members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas law enforcement officers past and present have faithfully and loyally rendered dedicated service to this county and have established for themselves an invaluable and enduring reputation to preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 15 through 21, 2022 is Law Enforcement Week. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commission calls upon all citizens of Rowan County to observe May 19, 2022 is Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in serving in service to the community or have become disabled in performing performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen hero this the second day of May 2022." That's a form of a motion.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have folks that are here with us today of our law enforcement folks?
Mr. Ramses is back here.
Is he? Chief, you want to come up and accept this on behalf of law enforcement commissioners? Can we join the chief?
Sure.
All right, this proclamation to establish May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Awareness Month. Whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer program works to affirm the commitment of Rowan County law enforcement officers and encourages citizens' awareness and appreciation for these officers. And whereas this program invites citizens to commit to prayer for an officer every day for one year and send birthday cards and notes of those of thanks to these officers. And whereas through the generosity of individuals, businesses, churches that have donated services and fundraising, 10,500 Bibles, 4,000 Shield of Badge Bible Promise Books, 11,000 New Testaments have been purchased to be given away. And whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer program began in 1995 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor and has began to expand statewide, reaching out to other counties, municipalities, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 911 communicators, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol troopers, fire departments, clerk record employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney offices, county commissioners, sheriffs, and attorneys. And whereas through the dedication and travel of Chaplain Taylor, counties from across the state have received encouragement and training for chaplains. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby establish the month of May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Month this the second day of May 2022. It's a form of a motion.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chaplain Taylor, you're still here, aren't you? Come on up and join us.
This is Rowan County Sheriff Chaplain, Michael Taylor, and he is also our chaplain. We appreciate him. And this time of the year, every year, we like to honor him with our Shield of Badge with Prayer honoring. And so, we appreciate you. Anything you'd like to say?
Oh, he's a preacher, no. Let's not.
He'll want to take up an offering.
That gives my chance. Now, I appreciate everybody in Rowan County and the work everybody does. I just ask you to support our program, pray for officers. This time of May is the time people can renew the officer they've been praying for or keep the one they've been praying for. And so, we have probably about 500 or more Shield of Badge prayer partners praying for all of our officers all across Rowan County and other counties in state. And we appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you. I'm going to give him that, and then we'll get a picture with him.
All right, next, it's my distinct honor to welcome Dr. Jimmy Jenkins, President of Livingstone College, Dr. Tony Davis. I don't know what to call you. Vice President of Livingstone, is that work? Is that work? And today, we have here with us some fine young men, and we'd like to honor them today. This is a proclamation honoring the Livingstone College 2022 CIA Southern Division Golf Championship Team. So whereas Livingstone College's golf team under head coach Andre Springs and assistant coach Titus Oakwell is hereby recognized and honored for its extraordinary 2022 golf season. Whereas this dynamic and talented team of Blue Bears won the 2022 Central Intercollegiate Athletic Association Golf Championship Title with the exceptional efforts of Senior Xavier Proctor, Senior Ronald Otile, Junior Joe Basalein, Junior Emmanuel Jakisa, Senior Colin Ahidra, freshman Ibrahim Alia, I don't know. I was good right up until then, wasn't I? Ibrahim Aliga, Junior Austin Goode, sophomore Austin Murphy, and Senior William TJ Garner. And whereas individual deserving superlatives were also earned by Coach Springs as the 2022 CIA Coach of the Year and Xavier Proctor as the 2022 CIA Golf Player of the Year. And whereas the amazing talent commitment of these young men along with their coaching staff is to be admired for the remarkable and victorious season. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor the Livingstone College golf team and coaching staff for their triumphant season and commends them for the display of sportsmanship and leadership as they represented Rowan County this the second day of May 2022. So unless you've been under a rock, you know these guys are just a big part of our community, and we've been so proud of them for so long. We appreciate the leadership of Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Davis for having the foresight of bringing these guys here. And Coach, you've done a wonderful job with them. There's assistant coach back there. We appreciate you stepping in when you did. And these guys, if you don't know them, your life is not yet complete. Am I right, Coach? You need to get to know these guys because they are some life-changing young men. And so, we are so honored to have them here today. Titus had sent me a list of things, and Titus, your whole email, we were just, I sent it to our clerk to print, and we've lost some of your email. But I want to talk to you about, just a minute, what they've done this year. The Winston-Salem State Golf Tournament held February 21st. They were the winner of that golf tournament. February 28th, they played in the Blue Bear Invitational. That was their own, they won that. There was more team than just one, right? Okay, I'm kidding. Yeah, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Let's see. And then Johnson C. Smith University 36 hole tournament, that was in March. And you guys were the winner of that. And then the CIA Southern Divisional Championship 36 hole, that was hosted by Fayetteville State at Anderson Creek Golf Club in Spring Lake, North Carolina. You guys won that. And then the CIA Championship, that was held also by Fayetteville State at Chikora Golf Course in Dunn, North Carolina. You won that. And so, it looks like just about everything you play, you win. And that's a good record. And so, we'd like to bring up, first of all, President Jenkins. Like to bring up Dr. Davis. We'd like to give you all a couple of copies of this. And then, we'll bring the team up and the coaches and give something to them. We've got a framed copy of this. We'd like to have you invite us to one of your assemblies, and we'd like to present it at one of your assemblies, if we could do that, and we'd kind of get the kids all excited a little bit. So, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Davis, you all come up. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, while we're shaking hands here, let me just tell you that I played against Dr. Jenkins in a lot of tournaments around here. And Dr. Jenkins has a team that he is sponsoring in any way. It's going to be loaded. He likes nothing better than his league. We're proud to have him here.
Well, come on in here, and we'll get a picture with you guys, and then we'll bring the team up. Okay? Oh, yes, here, please, please do.
I'm in for you too. First of all, let me just say how proud I am to be able to represent Livingstone College as the 12th president. But I also am very proud of these young men. Here's something that we did not say, but is very important to us. They are truly student athletes. These are not just golfers, but they also lead in the classroom. These young men have honor grades. They're representing more than 3.0 grade point average and on the honor roll. So, they're not just golfers, they are student athletes, and they're doing quite well. And they're also, you need to know that we are the number one school in the, number one HBCU school in golf in the nation. And that's another thing. And Coach Springs, I want to thank you for your hard work and all that you've done. Coach Massey, thank you for your leadership as the athletic director. Thank you as well. So, we're proud, and we want to thank the county commissioners for recognizing us. And Coach Titus, thank you also as well. He stepped in at a time when we really didn't have, Coach Springs was out medically, and he took over and didn't miss a beat. Everything went just according to the hall. So, we just thank you for that as well. And we thank the commissioners for recognizing Livingstone and our golf team today. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Now, coaches, how about if you come up, and then we'll let you introduce your young men as you come up. All right, I think we're going to do another shot here. Hold on one second. You ready? All right, coaches. What's up, buddy?
How you doing? Good to see you.
Come on up. Congratulations. Coach?
Thanks a lot, sir.
Uh huh. Yeah. Appreciate it. So, Jim Green and I had the privilege of meeting some of these guys just a couple of years ago. And this is the guy that's really the father of the whole group, right? What's the African name they call you?
Ogola.
Ogola, that's right, Ogola, which is father, right? Isn't that right?
Yeah, Ogola means that I'm a solution to problems.
That's right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. You're a problem or you're a solution?
I'm the solution.
I get confused about that. Well, Coach was having some health issues this year, right? And so...
Knee replacement, knee replacement, and the knee got infected. And that has three cuts there, back surgery. So, I was messed up for about nine, seven months, I think.
Yeah, so, and that's hard on a team because you lose your leadership. And so, Dr. Davis and Dr. Jenkins says, well, we have an answer. And what was that answer, Coach?
Well, you know, I was talking to the president when I was in the hospital, and he was asking me which way we're going to go with the golf coach. And I said, find Titus, Coach Titus, because Coach Titus was my captain. And I felt that we never would lose a beat if I had my captain in that spot while I was down.
Well, and so, how did that work out?
Oh, it worked out great. I remember when they was going to Alabama to play in the tournament, they stopped by my house in Charlotte, and we talked. That gave them some words of wisdom. My wife had to calm me down a little bit. I get a little hyped up when I'm talking to her sometime. But I told her to make sure they understand who's in charge and follow his leadership, and which they did. And when we got back, they stopped back through with the trophies, and we had some celebrations there. So, it was real great, real great.
Anything from you, Titus? You stepped in, you graduated in December, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah, so you stepped in, you've got a full-time job. You've stepped in to kind of take over the reins while Coach was out. And I know the guys really appreciate that a lot, and leadership appreciates it. So, any words from you?
Yes, sir. It's been definitely an honor to be given the chance to step in the leadership role, to help the team. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Jamar Jenkins, Dr. Davis, Coach Springs himself, and Coach Lamont Macy. They both believed in me. I mean, it wasn't the one person's decision. They all came together and made this decision that I should take over and help in the absence of Coach. I think it was the best decision they ever made.
Oh, you did? You know, one of his greatest gifts is his humility as well. He's a very humble guy. Yeah. So, at this time, Coach, why don't you introduce your players? And we'll bring, you want, Coach, you want to do that? You want that honor?
Yes.
And if they have a nickname that I know they have, I might throw the...
No, I won't. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have a team of about nine players, and now here we have eight players with us today. All great players. I'll start with the captain, Colin Ajidra. Colin Ajidra is a senior and a business major. Great golfer, too. Up next is Xavier Proctor. Business major and senior as well. And Player of the Year, of course. So, Ronald Otile, Sports Management Major, junior.
They call Ronald Country Club.
Yeah.
So...
Good job. Joe Basalein with the nickname Thunder. Sports Science Major, he's a junior as well. Great. Austin Goode. Business major and junior. Yeah, from Charleston, South Carolina. Yes. Great job. Austin Murphy from Colorado, Denver. Great golfer. Jakisa Emmanuel, he's actually my biological brother. He's a math major and raising senior.
Got him smiling.
Yeah. And ladies and gentlemen, Ibrahim Aliga, freshman. Business major as well. So, I would like to commend these young men for the great job they've done. I mean, we wouldn't have done without them. They have the commitment, perseverance, and hard work and determination it takes. And the results can speak for themselves. As you can see, winning everything, but they are the ones doing it. We are here to direct them to do the right thing with the leadership of Dr. Jamar Jenkins and Coach Macy Lamonty.
Why don't you guys come on up and fill in here on the end, and then we'll get a big group picture. This doesn't happen without good leadership. If you've got a few hours, take some time to listen to this young man's story of how he made it here to the US. And a lot of these guys are a result of that. And so, just wonderful folks. But, Mr. President, you don't just have 3.0. You have some 4.0 students here, don't you?
Yes.
You know, who's the 4.0 guys? I know you are. Yeah, any other 4.0s? Emma?
Yeah.
He's 4.0 too? Yeah. Wow. I've told folks, I convinced my parents, the college I went to graded on a 2.0 scale. They thought I was, they thought I was super smart.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Davis pointed out to me, with all this winning, they are currently ranked number one in the nation in Division II. It's a big deal. He does. Craig, you've got that next one.
Oh, I got, there it is. We'll read it. Let Jim read it. Or Judy.
All right, next, we never have this many, but we're going to move on to a real important one. Proclamation of Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. We have some friends of motorcycling here with us. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of citizens across North Carolina and Rowan County. Whereas North Carolina has over 195,000 registered motorcycles. And whereas it is important that the citizens of North Carolina be aware of motorcycles on our roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety through motorcycle awareness programs like those promoted by the Concerned Bikers Association or programs offered during drivers' education classes in area high schools. And whereas Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month is designed to increase public awareness about motorcycles and to encourage their safe and proper use among motorcycle riders and to encourage other motorcycle vehicle operators to be cautious and observe motorcycles, especially during their seasonal return to our streets and highways. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle is enhanced through a combination of rider training and experience, good judgment, and motorist awareness of motorcycles, sharing the, excuse me, sharing the roads of Rowan County and North Carolina. The Charlotte CBA, Rowan Cabarrus CBA, and the Concerned Bikers Association. and the Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina urge motorists in the county of Rowan to look twice and save a life because May is Motorcycle Awareness and New Month. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the month of May 2022 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Rowan County, North Carolina, and urges all citizens to be cautious and to help create an awareness of motorcyclists who share the road. This is the second day of May 22, 2022. And we have some friends, a motorcyclist here. If you'd like to come forward.
Let's pass the proclamation.
Yeah, yeah. So I make that in the form of a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, come on, come on forward. Yes.
That we teach actually include driver's ed students across the state. It is actually a law that students must learn about motorcycle awareness. We provide that program with instructors like myself in person. We've actually taught over 300,000 North Carolina driver's education students. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that with this proclamation to recognize National Economic Development Week in Rowan County, North Carolina, from May the 9th through May the 13th, 2022. Whereas the Rowan Economic Development Council is dedicated to promoting and facilitating business retention and strategic business growth in Rowan County. And whereas the Rowan Economic Development Council works closely with county and municipal officers, current and prospective business leaders and education administrators to work toward the overall betterment of Rowan County. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic development stimulate and incubate in entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, private, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas the International Economic Development Council created the first Economic Development Week in 2016. And this week-long celebration and recognition of the importance of economic development will be recognized across the globe. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the week of May the 9th through May the 13th, 2022 as Economic Development Week and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. This is the second day of May 2022.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If the EDC team would like to come forward. You know, Jim was reading that last paragraph, reminds individuals of the importance that expands career opportunities and makes lives better. And they have certainly done that. Thank you, Rod. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate these guys. And I was out of town last week, but watched my YouTube Live. These guys do a groundbreaking at Macy's, which is just a big win for Rowan County. And you guys keep doing wins after wins. Now, because this is Economic Development Week on these days doesn't mean the other 51 weeks you get off. That means you gotta still keep working, but we appreciate you guys in doing what we refer to as hope building. It's really important. And so what you have done for this community as a team in the past couple of years is nothing short of amazing. We got the brains here of the operation and the sales guys and the support. You guys are really wonderful and we're glad you are here and not a, our competition. We're glad you're on our team. So thank you for being here. And April, get a picture.
We were performing a groundbreaking. Of course, I wasn't there either because I was under the weather. But the rest of our team was there, as long with Commissioner Green and Commissioner Klisman. When we commemorated the beginning of construction of the new Macy's Performance Center with these ceremonial shovels, one of which we would like to present to the county commissioners in recognition and thanks for all you did to help us bring this project to Rowan County. I look like the Livingstone Golf Team, but we're not quite as large as they are, but we're just as mighty and we like to win. So Macy's was a huge win for Rowan County. Our largest project announced so far to date, 2,800 new employees and almost $600 million in new capital investment in our community. And it couldn't have been done without the role that each of you played in providing them incentives and other support as we went through that process over a period of six or eight months. So thank you very much. And we hope you will display that here at the county offices somewhere proudly. Thank you so much. Yes, I would. I would like to start over here with Kendall Henderson, our Director of Business Services. Johnny Michael, Director of Administrative Services, everything that needs to go on behind the scenes she takes care of. Scott Shelton, our Vice President. Jay Garno, our newest team member and Director of Marketing and Communications. So you'd like to get a picture?
All right, we got one more. Give that off to you.
Okay. Whoa. Okay, this is a proclamation for our emergency medical service personnel. It is, whereas the emergency medical services are a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-giving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the EMS strong theme. This is EMS, caring for our communities. It encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This is the second day of May 2022. And I make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, if we could have our EMS folks come forward, Mike.
Oh, I just want to say, while they're on their way, I just want to say a special thank you to our emergency personnel for all that they did during COVID. The pandemic was hard on everybody. Thank you. And especially to TJ because he was on the planning team, so.
We want to thank everybody for having us up. It does take a lot of people, as you heard, all the physicians and individuals that come together to make this whole thing. This is just a very small portion of us that bring this whole thing together. So thank you.
I was looking out there and it looks like Dean Hunter left. Wanted to recognize Dean Hunter, our chairman of our school board was here. So Dean, I'm sorry, I missed you before we left. Appreciate you being here. Anything? We have one for public comment. Connie?
Connie Byrne, and I live at 216 Goldson Street, Kannapolis, on the House of my Street in Rowan County. And as you know, I've been coming to these meetings faithfully for almost eight years. As you may or may not know, the Wake County Commissioners just asked for a 132% pay raise. Their justification, it's not the part-time job that they signed on for. And they see, and, but rather it's become a full-time job. While Craig, Jim, and Judy are retired, Mike and Greg are not. None of them signed on to this for the pay. They signed on to this for their love of this community. And we are all incredibly lucky to have you. You do from your heart what you believe is best for the residents of this county and for the well-being of our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item number five, Consider Requests. This will be from Randy for Consider Requests for Great Grant Broadband Expansion Funding Support.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Today I have with me three different internet service providers. Two are going to be presenting remotely. We have their PowerPoint slides. This is in addition to the one internet service provider that has already been approved. Just so you know, as you're hearing these presentations, the State Broadband Infrastructure Office is the authorizing authority for the grant. And they'll issue a grant hopefully to one of these applicants. And they'll talk about some of the services they provide, what they're going to be providing in the grant, and what areas of coverage. And along with that, they'll have their amount and request of ARPA funding that they need to have matched. Keep in mind, I've let all of them know that you've already approved up to 1.9 million. That was for the first, so their amount will be under that. There won't be any allocations of amounts greater than that as they go through. So if I can, I'll ask Brian with Charter, and then I'll go to Quintera, and then we have Open Broadband here. And then I'll have a closing slide for your resolutions. We'll make sure to move Brian over. And Brian, we will control the slides. So just mention next slide and same for you as well, Polly, with Quintera. And Brian, looking at your screen, I'm not sure if you have audio. I just see the video of you. Just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Is April controlling this?
Randy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You may go ahead and proceed.
Great. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Looks like I've got a little bit of an echo here. Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead.
So my name is Brian Gregory. I'm Vice President of Government Affairs for Charter Communications. Appreciate your time today. I will try to be brief, but please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. If you want to move to the next slide, please. Hopefully you've heard of Charter Spectrum. We have a significant presence in the county. This is our 41-state footprint, a bunch of numbers to throw at you. But we have 750,000 miles of network and 32 million customers nationwide. But we probably care more about North Carolina. So let's move on to the next slide, please. That is just a quick overview of our stats for the state of North Carolina. There won't be a test, so that you don't need to memorize this, but out of 41 states, North Carolina ranks in our top five. We've got almost 3 million customers and almost 11,000 employees and connected about 127,000 new homes and businesses last year. So if you could move on to the next slide. One of the ways that we are committing ourselves to rural broadband deployment is through a national program called the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, or ARDOF for short. Hopefully you've heard of it. It was reverse auction on the federal level. And it was targeted toward census blocks that did not have any residents who had 25 by 3, 25 megabits download by 3 megabits upload. And we participated in this auction nationally last year. And we won a number of locations in North Carolina and very excited to also include Rowan County into that mix. So if you want to move on to the next slide, please. You can see, hopefully on the map, the green areas are ARDOF award areas. Includes 962, I think, actual, sorry, 942 locations. Those could mostly houses, but could also be a business. You'll see a significant amount of the areas in the northwest area of the county and then a little bit in the southeast as well. We are building fiber optic cable to the premises, which could be, again, a home or a business with gigabit download speeds and 500 with gigabit, uh, download speeds and five hundred megabits upload. So it's extremely fast. Uh, we do have packages that are for everybody, whether you like the fast speeds with a gigabit, or if you need a one or slower speed, we can offer that too. We offer lower-tier income speeds for qualifying families. But, uh, we, we try to build a system that's robust, and it will be scalable for the future. If you go to the next slide, you can see that if you read the newspaper on Friday, we have already started work in Rowan County. We have connected the first two hundred-plus customers. So that is, uh, well on the way. And that's something that we're very proud to be deploying and working on. But today, we're here to talk mostly about the Great Grant application. So if you please go to the next slide. The board is probably aware of the three hundred and fifty million dollars on the table. Uh, it's ARPA money that is being leveraged by the state. And we are very excited to pitch a partnership opportunity with the county. They are due this Wednesday, so we have enough time to get one in here. Essentially Charter would be proposing to build the same type of architecture for our Great Grant as we're doing for the ARDOF. And the, uh, the way the program works is if the county decides that they would like to partner with Charter and use ARPA funding, we will get extra points on our application. And of course, we want the extra points, so we make sure the money comes into Rowan County. So specifically for this build, we would be asking the county for a hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding. And you probably are wondering what you would get for the hundred thousand dollar. So we'll move on to the next slide, please. And you'll see a map there. The map is, the green was, remember, was the ARDOF. Those are the nine hundred and forty-two locations that we are already doing. That's underway. The red dots would be our Great Grant application. That's another seven hundred and sixty-nine locations in addition to the nine forty-two. So collectively, I think it's in the seventeen hundred range. And you can see how the red dots are similar to where the ARDOF areas are. So that is the map and the number of locations. The last slide is just simply a, a recognition of an award we had just recently won from US News and World Report. Randy, on the, the last slide, if you're interested, uh, as the best internet rural provider. So I thank you for your time and give you an opportunity to ask any questions if there are any.
If you go back to the map, it looks to me like there is nothing, you, you're not proposing any coverage for the north sections of Rowan County or the northwest sections. Is that correct? Nothing over, I assume that's Highway seventy going through there, I may be wrong.
So the map here is based upon what the state is saying is eligible for the program. So they have a three hundred and fifty million dollar program where the applications are due this week. We did an extensive analysis with our footprint currently and what was eligible in this particular program, and identified these specific addresses. It would not surprise me, and I'm sure you could probably tell me that there's going to be other areas that are not indicated on this map that may need broadband. There is a second program that's going to come out this summer with the state, uh, there's another four hundred million dollars available that they can go and look at additional addresses. So we're, we're trying to reach for everything we can in the specific rate program, and, you know, we're using ARDOF, the national program, and we're prepared and willing to partner on both great and/or this, this other four hundred million dollar program coming up later this summer. And we would be very interested in talking to you further about additional locations.
All right, thank you, Brian. Um, and I'll, we'll move over to Quintera, Ms. Polly Gifford. The next slides will be starting your presentation, and I'll hand it over to you.
Hello, can y'all, I'm just going to do a sound check real quick, how's that?
Good.
Good, okay. Hi, um, good afternoon, I'm Polly Gifford, I'm with Quintera Networks. Um, we are here today. We want to appreciate the opportunity to present to you on who we are and the work that we've been doing, um, for the county. And so if you would move to the next slide, I'd like to introduce who we are. Um, one, I appreciate Charter Spectrum and the work they're doing, their investment in ARDOF and bringing rural, um, services to the counties that they serve in. Quintera Network has also been serving in county. We are currently in the county today. We provide the network to your schools throughout the county. And when we built the network for the schools, we built it in the most robust, reliable way that we possibly can. So when we introduce ourselves, what we really think differentiates us as Quintera Networks is the network. It is the fiber infrastructure that is, um, was built throughout the county. We built it, we overbuilt it when we built, so we have a high capacity of fiber. We have a high capacity of fiber throughout your counties, and we go to the most rural areas where your schools exist. So we've been working with the schools throughout Quintera's history. We began Quintera Networks, we are a wireless company that connected the most rural schools where there wasn't infrastructure, and we brought gig wireless, fixed wireless technologies, pointed microwave, microwave, high-capacity microwave back then. We, as soon as we could with E-Rate, we started migrating those schools to fiber-based services, and we started investing in building this very robust network. So architecturally, we can deliver high our quality services. And so as we continued to grow, then we built that network. We extended to serve small businesses, enterprise, and our overall county services. So the thing that we believe differentiates us is really the people. As you've seen today, I looked at your golf team and your economic development team and your police and the commissioners, the, the amount of work that y'all worked together to serve your county. And Quintera has worked very closely with our communities to make sure that we're building networks to scale, that we've delivered the advanced technologies. We've been a leader in the level of services we bring to our customers, the highest quality of network and capacity. So we are carriers, carriers network. We built the networks for schools, we've been servicing the carriers, the five G networks, your anchor tenants, and we built the network that met all of those requirements so that we could deliver those services that were reliable. Um, before COVID, Quintera started looking at extending these networks to bring services to residential services in rural America, pre-COVID. Then as COVID hit, and we realized the need, as the nation realized the need, Quintera's realized the need, we delivered those services out to those schools. We understand the need. We have worked carefully with our schools to bring services like E-Rate and ECF, another funding program, to these schools so we can help get students connected. So we started working on a residential strategy, and then Quintera Networks, with their management team and their executive team, determined to extend our network that has been delivering those carrier-grade services so that we now are going to deliver our small business and small, medium-business-type internet to your residents, to, in specific counties. Um, Quintera Network services over two hundred counties throughout the United States in those schools. However, we're looking at our more strategic locations in North Carolina, which is our corporate headquarters for Quintera, our corporate offices in Charlotte, that we focus on our specific counties that we're working with so that we can bring the highest level of residential service. So we differentiate ourselves in not thinking that we're going to deliver services different, that just as we did schools and we led leading those services to anchor tenants, to our businesses, that we're going to bring that level of services to our home. Because we believe small business happens in homes. We know that students are being educated at homes and that we're operating and our digital economy comes from these homes. So we believe the level of that service is critical for all of us and for your economic development in your county, continued economic development. So we can go to the next slide. This is a little hard to see, but those blue lines are our very high-capacity fiber throughout the state of North Carolina, specifically in your county. That we have a very robust ringed architecture fiber network that we operate and run, run services over today. We can go to the next slide. So we started working early. When we thought of the Great Grant, we knew grants were coming, obviously, the money, and how would our network best serve? So we evaluated twenty of our top counties in North Carolina where we deliver services today, and looked at the architecture where we had the best network to deliver services. And Rowan County, we have a hundred and eight miles of very strategic install of capacity of fiber that we've built in partnership with the schools. And E-Rate, federal funding, we have a history of supporting federal funds and working closely with public-private partnerships in successful partnerships. We then established and identified by the locations, and this, we were just looking at earlier, there are the seven hundred, and, um, there are seven hundred and seventy-six locations that are unserved. Our network most opt A serves five hundred and fifty-seven of those. So we really, we worked very carefully to look how the Great Grant structure was built so that we could build the most successful network for you and leverage your investment and our investment and the Great Grant contribution to the maximum ability. We also carefully looked at how we could serve all of your unserved, but when we did that, the model wasn't optimal for the grant structure. And so we determined that it would might be to your best interest and ours for you to be able to invest that money and continue to invest that money that you have allocated to not only this program, but the future CAB program can, continuing access to broadband throughout your county. And then Quintera would continue to grow our network structures to support that. So we can show the next slide. Uh, I'm sorry, I probably should have gone over that very quickly. As I stated on that last slide, we are looking at the partnership, your partnership is critical, obviously, to the success of this, not only for building the network, but for adoption and for looking at access and adoption. Uh, you know, you can build great networks, and it doesn't mean they'll come. And we've seen that historically. Um, we as a nation know that that's true. It's hard to change culture, to change patterns. And so as we build these networks, Quintera's worked very closely with our schools. The nation and Quintera feel like schools are one of the strongest way to help adoption and through those programs. Um, also then, as we continue to build and bring those numbers in to ensure that we have that. So as I said, that, you can see the request for the county contribution and Quintera's contribution in the state, so. Um, Quintera's Fiber Services, we, this is completely new next-generation GPON architecture. We don't have any legacy that we have to support or bill. We don't have, um, billions of dollars of other services and millions of dollars of other services that we have to go bill at the same time. There's a, a large shortage, as we all know, uh, supply chain shortage of fiber, uh, manholes of services, people to install, right, access. So we feel like to be success, successful, we had to target, we had to focus on our most optimal opportunities, both partnering with the county, next-gen architecture. Reliability is an important factor of this grant, and the ability to deliver a reliable network based on our backhaul and our robust, very robust backbone network. We're going to deliver a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty to set that bar higher, um, fully symmetrical, um, with the ability to deliver that service and scale to, um, gig services. We are a carrier service, right? We, we are a carriers' network, we understand backhaul. We do it for the big five G carriers today, and we can deliver that service. And then, as I said earlier, deliver a very competitive service, not only to your underserved, but now to bring additional competitive services throughout your county. So we do, as I said, want to continue to work for adoption and success of this program. Um, finally, the five hundred and fifty-seven locations out of your seven hundred and eighty-six, as I said earlier, it was really just optimizing the best grant proposal that we could with your funds and ours to impact your, um, locations. The next slide, um, our network immediately, and when we deploy a next-gen GPON node, it gives us the ability to, to deliver services for an additional four hundred and fifty locations that are already within, um, drop cable on our network. We have over seventy-eight hundred locations that are on net um, throughout the county that we want to bring competitive services to, and twenty-five thousand are near net for us, um, throughout your county of our very robust fiber network. And if you can tell by that green ring that as things connect on that ring, that we can deliver services both east and west so that we can make sure that services don't get lost. Um, as I said, we already deliver, um, to your, your schools and libraries today, confirmed your businesses and your small business, and to extend that to your homes. So I think, um, I have a simple graphic that I use on the next slide. Um, I think I can do this very quick. We, the other thing that we do and that we have, um, historically done, and we will continue to do, is we layer services. The fiber infrastructure is the most important piece of this infrastructure, and the ability to, and that infrastructure needs to be built long-term so that in three years and five years, we're not right back where we were with just not enough bandwidth to deliver as we scale, and we don't need a hundred and fifty. We actually need five hundred and five hundred or more. So we have a network that's built to scale long-term, architecturally, with capacity and with next-gen infrastructure. The next thing we do is really lay services on, both ourselves and with partners. So we're working very closely with wireless technology partners that are bringing wireless, um, services into communities. So ubiquitous access for students and their devices as they leave school in these rural communities that have access to out with wireless solutions. We're bringing a fiber to the home solution in our model. And then we're also layering additional smart services on that, working with our different partners throughout the communities. So the idea, the vision of having smart communities, smart light poles, ubiquitous access is really built on an architectural ability to deliver those and not to build additional services in the future to scale. So that is our strategy of success, and we've done that successfully over the beginning of our country, company in two thousand and two. The same company, um, that we've been together and grown, um, to date, um, since two thousand and two. So on some, I do have my little drawing that I like to use. Uh, it's really simple in a way, that the network architecture is, there is a core that all of us use, that we access the internet, and where content lives in the United States, that we want to deliver to the home in the most effective manner. We have a network, distribution network, Quintera's backbone, and our backhaul is robust throughout your state. It's highly connected to the internet and to the content providers in the most possible way. We've done this in a very effective construction model so that it's cost-effective. And then we work very closely in our school districts with our cities and counties to continue to build this distribution network. And then ultimately, we're bringing that same level of service to the home so that we can bring next-generation services to the home. So this has been our strategy, it's been successful, and now we're extending to the home to make sure that we can, can scale this and do this in a scalable, sustainable method for the next twenty years. So, any questions?
All right, hearing none, thank you Polly, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Nick Stewart from Open Broadband will be presenting on their solution as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thanks for allowing us to come and present before you today. Uh, it's, uh, I think my third time now. It's, I think, my third time now spending time with you and glad to spend time in Rowan County. Thank you for allowing us to present our fiber class broadband solution that we are hoping to install utilizing funds from the great grant. Excuse me. We go in the right way. Okay. There we go. I'd like to start off with a quote that I'll let you guys read, but circumstances over the past couple of years have definitely highlighted to us the importance of internet. To get access to education and access to commerce during this pandemic. And this is really goes back to the core of what open broadband is about. Our company is locally based. We've got staff living in the communities that we service as well. We are based here in North Carolina, but we also provide service in South Carolina and in Virginia as well. We do a lot of different projects such as workforce development to help our local communities be able to create jobs. We've just embarked on one last year with the city of Charlotte where we've hired five new staff members who are helping build our network around the community down there, and we're also going to be doing the same thing in Virginia. As you're aware, we've been deploying internet here throughout the county for the past several months. And in that time, we have around fifty customers who are receiving broadband internet service here in Rowan. We have also been investing in our own infrastructure recently. We've set up a data center that will allow us to increase not only the capacity for internet that we provide, but also additional services to commercial customers to continue with our economic development progress. We're using a lot of line of sight and non-line of sight equipment and focusing a lot on public private partnerships. We didn't put a slide in here related to this, but as of last week, we were actually partnered with Microsoft in their airband program to deliver internet service to rural parts of our region. They're going to be providing us with different resources and expertise to help us continue our mission to provide broadband service to rural areas. These are a few installations that we've done in Alexander County over the past couple of months. And you can see there we're running over a hundred megabits per second and closer to symmetrical speeds than some of the other offerings that are out there. As you know, we're here discussing the great grant opportunity today. And the map that you see on the left has different colored areas. The gray areas are projects that are already funded by programs like Artoff. The salmon colored areas are the parts of the community that we're here discussing today. And you can see there's a few of them that are similar to donut holes. Let this pass. Where our funds are being used to provide areas, but still leaving chunks of the community unserved. These funds are available to internet service providers such as ourselves. We have to provide services, at least a hundred megabits download today with a hundred by a hundred by twenty twenty-six. Very excited to discuss with you the new technology that we're going to be deploying to reach our speed goals, among a few other resources that we have. Tirana is a fixed point wireless company that has spent more than three hundred million dollars in research and development. That will allow us to provide up to a gigabit speed through non-line of sight in our network. We're very excited about the implementation of this technologies and actually have a few real world examples to share with you on that. This is a five and a half mile link in Joplin, Missouri that was deployed using Tirana. And as you can see, at the bottom, they're receiving more than four hundred megabits per second in download speeds. And still have good quality latency that we strive for in our networks. This is another implementation in a wooded area of Maine. Where a company called Red Zone was able to use Tirana to deliver six hundred and thirty megabit link in their footprint. Company in Texas is rolling out a large project, they're utilizing Tirana. Some of the benefits to the equipment that we're utilizing is it allows us to deliver fiber quality speeds. But with a fraction of the time that it would take to physically roll out fiber infrastructure and again in non-line of sight environments as well. And a fourth example in Ohio. Another company that's utilizing Tirana to offer faster than a hundred, even two hundred megabits per second speeds to customers in wooded areas. Our approach is to utilize fiber circuits and leverage the experience that we've gained over the last five years. To deploy fixed point wireless infrastructure on cell phone towers and other vertical assets as well and mounting radios, so that way we can hit that hundred by hundred required speeds that are there. We also are proud that we're an affordable option. Our speed start, our packages, excuse me, start under fifty dollars and we also participate in the Affordable Connectivity Program, which gives eligible customers thirty dollar subsidy from the federal government. Dang it, do that again, sorry. These are the areas that we are focusing on for this grant project. One of the added benefits of the technology is in addition to focusing on the eligible locations within Rowan County, we're also able to provide service to other areas that aren't considered eligible, but still have high needs for internet service as well as providing competition, which is good for everyone. We're looking at leveraging five additional towers and at least nine hubs to provide service to around seventeen hundred homes within the county. The total cost of this project is two point one million dollars. Today, we're seeking the contribution that we're also willing to match ourselves of five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Rowan County government. And I'll go back to that map in a second. But we just want to continue to do what we have been doing here in the community of focusing on connecting the unconnected homes and residents in Rowan County. And I'm here to take any questions that you may have. We also have Alan, who is our CEO in the audience and Dave, who is our operations manager for Rowan and Alexander Counties, if you have any questions.
I've got several questions.
Yes, ma'am.
We've been working with you now for how long?
You've been working with Open Broadband. Before I started with the company. But I know that we've been rolling out infrastructure for the last several months in the county.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, do you remember when we started working with you? Okay. Seems to me that it's been longer than that. Okay, so where exactly are we at with the stuff that we've already said yes to?
Yes, ma'am. We have deployed equipment on two towers. We're focusing on the Young Mountain Tower now. We have around fifty customers who are connected there and a few hubs also off of that tower that are providing service to the community.
So you have fifty customers in five months?
In the last several months, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and are you still going to be constructing a tower or is that up the?
As far as I know, we're just utilizing the two towers that we have equipment on now and we are constructing hubs. We have built, or excuse me, we've had a couple of people in the community who have built towers that we've installed equipment on and are using to serve people as well.
So as we move forward, then looking at these seventeen hundred homes, what's your anticipated timeline for getting those hooked up?
The grant itself has prescribed timelines for implementation that I can't recall off the top of my head. But by utilizing the Toronto equipment, we are able to hit those marks. I know that other methods of implementation. It'll be interesting to see if they're also able to hit the prescribed timelines that the grant has for the implementation.
Mr. Kraus, do you know? And, and then if we go to seventeen hundred with this contract, then how many more of our citizens do we still need to cover?
We are looking at cab, but as I mentioned, the footprint that you're seeing on the map, Alan has the overarching number, but is designed to focus on seventeen hundred homes that qualify for the grant. But the coverage area that we have there would hit, would hit thirty-five thousand homes.
But that would be then in competition with the other folks that are out there. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have open broadband in my house and it's working great. But there's so many people in our community who line of sight is just not working.
Yes, sir. That's the biggest reason why we are moving towards Tirana. The speeds that they can deliver are faster than the speeds that we're currently delivering and even through non-line of sight.
Looking toward or telling me that you're going to have that capability.
We are.
Doing it.
Yes, sir.
In what period, time period?
I do know that our most recent implementations are contingent on how we do with our grant funding. Not only with the great grant, but also with the cab grant funding as well.
So the benefit you guys have over the big guys is big guys are fiber in the ground. And they're just going to follow a path pretty much, right? And that path will be dictated by of funding that will come from three sources, government themselves and us.
Yes, sir.
You'll do the same thing, but your reach will be much wider.
Yes, sir. And still with the ability to deliver fiber quality speeds and future proofing, which is again, why we're looking at, why we're going to be utilizing Tirana for this project.
So you guys really should be in a position of not feeling like you're getting ganged up on because you still have a tremendous advantage. Don't, don't you feel like you've got a big advantage? I mean, assuming you can get the equipment out there and up and going and it's the right equipment. Because of being wireless, it's not going to follow the backbone of these underground fiber lines.
It does give us more flexibility, yes.
Gives you tremendous. You guys could be, I mean, again, assuming you can get it right, you're really in the A position, aren't you? Hey, you, you want to, you want to come up? Yeah.
That's a great, great question. Alan Fitzpatrick, co-founder and CEO of the company. So one benefit about fixed wireless is we don't have to necessarily run by every single house. So the challenge for a fiber provider, even if we were doing fiber, is you have to, you can't have brakes on, right? It's got to run by every single home and not everybody's going to sign up. You're spending a lot of money for customers or people that may not become customers. With wireless, we can cover that area and not everybody has to take the service. We can just provide antennas at the homes that want service. And we can be cost effective with that. That's why our network model cost is so much lower and our reach is so much higher for the same amount of line. It does put us in a good, good position, right?
But if I heard right with the previous provider, is it country, Conterra? They were also talking about this type of type of
Wireless.
Network model, you're right. Not to put the Conterra person on the spot, but we have used Conterra as a vendor for us, as a fiber provider. We're very grateful for your service, by the way, Polly. So we have to have fiber at the tower sites to take the internet traffic back and then we do that wireless last mile. Yeah, so companies like Conterra are very useful to us.
Well, that was going to be a question when I heard her say, I think she said the contract with wireless. So are you a potential vendor for them?
We are now, as well as other companies as well. We have agreements with a lot of the carriers.
You know, it's interesting. Commissioner Klusman chaired a study that the county did. And wireless broadband or open broadband is really who came out of that study. And not surprisingly why, because the other companies were fiber or in the ground type of providers and everyone, for lack of a better term, everyone but you guys walked away. Isn't that right, Randy? Yeah. And so now federal government's getting involved and we're back at the table and we're grateful for that. Because not only will, it looks like everybody is going to be in those unserved areas where it was only you. So from our position, we love the idea of competition for citizens and for county folks, and that's good for you guys. It drives you to be better, right? You gotta have a better product and a better price. And so that works out for everybody. But now they're back to the table because of really federal dollars that are available and so.
I think one of the comments or several of you made is there've been speed of deployment. The biggest complaint we get isn't the quality of our service or the speed. It's people want our service and we can't get it to them fast enough. It's a nice problem to have, but it's still a problem. Got to get it out to more people sooner.
I also wanted to mention, Commissioner, you asked about the amount of time that we've been working with you compared to our deployment pace. I want to brag, since I've been here.
There is a difference.
Yes, ma'am. And over the last few months, throughout the open broadband footprint in North Carolina, South and Virginia, Rowan County and Alexander County have been deploying the most customers in our company for the last couple of months. And we've also doubled the amount of staff that we have serving Rowan County. We have two technicians, our operations manager who's helping as well, and then a site survey person.
So when you, when you talk about those fifty customers, have they been like just over the last couple of months then? Okay, so.
But it's still fifty customers. Absolutely. I mean, that's, think of all the folks that, that don't qualify or line of sight or whatever the issue is, that's just fifty customers.
We're also leveraging non-line of sight and finding other infrastructure as well. Think it was three weeks ago. There's a grain silo that we connected that allowed us to get five or six more customers already, and I climbed it myself to put the equipment on there.
Holy cow.
We're doing, we're doing everything we can and throwing all of our resources to make sure that we're moving as quickly as we're able to.
Well, you're talking about seventeen hundred customers in this contract.
Yes, sir.
If you don't do but twenty-five a month, how long is that going to take you to get twenty, seventeen hundred customers?
That's why we're going for the state money, for the grant money. If we have more capital, we can deploy more resources to go, to go after faster. We're just a small company, we have limited resources. We'd like to do more faster, just it takes capital.
You need more people.
Correct. By lack of effort or lack of interest.
I get it.
And, and not to defend you guys, but I've had phone calls at my home, actually it's one of Jim's neighbors that didn't even know about the program. She said that she had, I guess it's AT&amp;T come out and she said, you know, my driveway is like two thousand feet long because she's in a farm. And they wanted a fortune to run the cable back there and then, you know, charge her a monthly fee. And I told her to go to Jim's house and she could get all the fiber optics that she needed. So when you said you put that on your gazebo, I was like, okay, she's fixed up now. So, so I think part of your problem that I've experienced with the customer, with the county residents I talked to, they just don't know about it yet.
We've been working on that with, we actually had five technicians, we brought in folks from Alexander and from Charlotte to go knocking on doors and conduct site surveys about a month or so ago to increase the visibility and presence that we have in town.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, I'll open this back up and get to the last slide. All right, I'll open this back up and get to the last slide before.
You know, we do want to thank Open Broadband again, not certainly, absolutely not to throw any barbs at the other companies because we get it, you know, running fiber to the home in a rural community is a very, very expensive model. And the answer was, we're just not going to do it. We understand that. So you guys stepped in because you could. And at the time before this, all this Great Grant money and stuff was available, we were working on a tier system, right? So there was a, there was a North Carolina, some North Carolina money available, but that was being doled out in the tier system. And we weren't in the favored tier.
Yes, that was the original Great Grant.
Right. So tell, so tell me if I'm wrong. So you guys, right, you had communities that were in those favored tiers that were getting dollars. And so naturally, you were running to those communities because that's where the money was, right? And it would help build your infrastructure in those communities. And so we were here doing our broadband study and saying, hey, we want some, but we weren't in the favored tier. So it was hard to get folks here. We were providing some public dollars to get them here, but it was hard to compete with the state grants when you weren't in the favored tier. So now Great Grant comes along and now everybody wants back in. And competition will be much greater. Hopefully you guys will get what you want. We'd like to see you rewarded for being the first, you know, in Rowan County. We hope you do well. And we hope the community does well. So.
Now to clarify on the considerations for approval, this is similar to the very, or actually it's exactly the same, other than the amounts and the companies. And just for the board's knowledge, we are, through your approval, there is a contribution of county ARPA funds that's allowed under general statute and state budget for this. If this is for the winner of, if there is a selected winner for Rowan County, then our portion will take place. The, all of the internet service providers have gone through and you didn't hear all of that detail about everything they're having to do for point systems and designing and building these maps, what's eligible, ineligible. And so, one, I appreciate what they've gone through. I've heard a lot of it. Trying to keep you guys from having to hear all of that. So here's, you know, what the services are, what the levels and the areas. Some of the questions related to what areas can they cover? It's very well defined about that unserved area. The next program that's coming out after Great Grant would be the cab or completing access to broadband. I have heard from all the providers, they are interested in what that looks like and will work with us on that piece as well. So that may help get that expanded areas. But since this is ARPA funds, there's a lot tied to federal requirements of where you can have coverage. So they've all worked within the best of their bounds to get that where they can. So now with, with your approval of these, we'll have these resolutions, we'll pass those along to the internet service providers. They'll submit their applications to the state. And like to update you, once we hear back from the state of any awards that would impact Rowan County. Definitely think there will be a favorable. We have four competitors with very good proposals. So with that, I've got the considerations for approval in front of you.
All right. Any other, no other questions for Randy? All right, if not, we have a motion to approve the resolutions for these carriers.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you guys for coming. Those of you on the phone, thank you for joining us. All right, we have budget amendments. Do we have a motion to approve these budget amendments? Thank you. Second, all in favor, say aye. Appointments, JCPC, Jeremy Jacobs has tendered a resignation. On the JCPC, do we have a motion to approve that? In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. And then Henry Smith applied, so we'd like to put him back in that spot. We have a motion to approve Mr. Smith. All right, all in favor, say aye. Rowan EDC, Dr. Watlington resigned. We have a motion to accept his resignation. All in favor, say aye. Town of Faith zoning ETJ, Vicky Miller applied for reappointment approval for that. All right, and then I now move that we enter into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 14331811A1. Consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on April 4th, 2022. And in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 14331811A3 for attorney-client privilege communication regarding potential litigation. And we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We'll get started as soon as we close down.
Question, come out.
So move.
Try to make a motion that we agree.
Second.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, wait, no, no, no.
Mike's got something, didn't he?
I would like to add an item.
Second.
All right, this proclamation, ooh, that's loud. Proclamation recognize this form of motion. Proclamation recognize National Correction Officer Week in Rowan County, North Carolina from May 1st through May 7th of 2022. Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to the maintain safe correctional facilities and ensuring public safety and whereas correctional facilities across the US, both civilian, military, public, private, adult, juvenile are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with deep understanding of the challenges within the profession. And whereas correctional officers and employees are responsible for the custody, care and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance, maintenance of safe and secure facilities. And whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers and directors and whereas correctional officers and employees train, teach, mentor, counsel, treat thousands of offenders and whereas correctional officers and employees provide offenders with direction, hope and a new focus while assisting with reentry in life outside of corrections. And whereas correctional officers and employees raise, rise to meet any challenges in services that serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. And now therefore be it resolved, correctional officers and employees deserve the recognition for their services and should be condemned by leaders in the, in the profession, by public, by the public and elected officials for the tremendous job they do and exceptional performance of their duties in the most difficult of circumstances. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners is hereby recognized the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022 as National Correction Officer Week. This the second day of May 2022.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mike. And we're sorry we missed that. Motion to adjourn. Second, second, in favor, say aye. Bye. Have a good week.